The meeting of the Marquette City Commission is called to order on Monday, September 30th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Please rise and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, may I have roll call?
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Mayor, Commissioner Otte, we.
Here.
Commissioner Schlegel.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Mayor Protem Hanley and Mayor Davis.
Here.
Commissioners, may I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Smith?
I would move that we excuse Commissioner Mayor and Protem Hanley for personal reasons.
And the second, Commissioner Schlegel.
I second the motion.
Okay, comments? Okay, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. It's nice to see all of you here today, and especially all the blue uniforms. Commissioner Otte, I always said he already said he feels very safe. We have an election coming up, in case you haven't noticed. The absentee ballots have gone out and started arriving in the mail today. And early voting will begin on October 26th. If you do want to vote before that, you can visit the city clerk's office and do an absentee ballot. On our ballot today, this year, we have some charter amendments for the city. And in your water bill, whoops, excuse me, you will have this nice little sheet of paper that tells you about our charter, our proposed charter amendments and what you need to know. And if you want additional information, you can visit our website, marquette.gov/charter2024. Also, since the fire department is here, I want to let you know that we have, this is this Saturday, right? We have Fire Prevention Week, our 31st Annual Fire Prevention Kickoff Parade. At 11 o'clock on Saturday, you can look at the trucks and all the displays that will be located on Bluff Street, directly behind Washington Street Harlow Park. I hope to see you there. And with that, we will go on to boards and committees. Commissioners, we have some appointments to make. Whoop, what did I do?
The chief has a.
You need to approve the agenda.
Oh, that would be a good thing. Approval of the agenda. Thank you. Commissioners, we have an agenda in front of us. Commissioner Larson.
Make the motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
And Commissioner Otte.
Second.
Comments?
No, thank you, Chief Grim.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Now we'll move on to boards and committees. So Commissioners, we have to, Commissioner Smith is ready for this.
I move that we appoint Paul Schumacher to the Market Housing Commission, Kent Wilkinson to the Planning Commission, and Mateo McLeely as a student ex officio member of the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, with the dates as outlined for the commission.
And the second, Commissioner Schlegel.
I'll back that one up.
Okay, comments?
Thank you for serving on our critically important boards and committees.
Yeah, I'll back that one up as well. I like to see the reappointments. It's always nice to see that they're getting some good experience on the committee that they've decided to be on. And I would encourage others to follow their lead.
Okay, just so I'm clear, we did not do the, okay. Any other comments?
Just the appointment, not the reappointment.
Oh, okay. We'll get there, we're getting there.
Yeah, we'll get there. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Now, we have a reappointment. Commissioner Otte.
I move to reappoint Bruce Hagela to the Local Development Finance Authority for a term ending 8/1/28.
And the second? Commissioner Schlegel.
I'll do that one too.
Okay, any comments?
No, just want to thank Bruce. He lives in my neighborhood, it's great to see him always be involved.
Yeah, Bruce has been involved for many years in many different facets, and it's nice to see him continue on.
Absolutely.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. We will move on to public comments. If you would like to speak for public comment, please step up to the podium. You have three minutes per person. And please state your name and physical address when making public comments. Anyone for public comment? I'll ask one more time, anyone for public comment? Okay, public comments are now closed. We have a couple presentations this evening. And let's start with their certificate of appreciation for Battalion Chief Brian Phillips.
Give you guys a little bit of a background on Brian's career, but I'll keep it short. Brian joined the fire department in 1998 after his dad, Bob Phillips', retirement. Brian followed his lead in becoming an integral part of the department. As Brian moved up through the ranks, he put his stamp on several programs. He held the position of lead instructor for our elementary school Learn Not to Burn program, lifeguard instructor, and vehicle extrication instructor. In 2004, Brian was commended by this commission for rescuing a disabled residence from the burning home. Brian attained his fire officer certifications and attended incident command classes at the National Fire Academy. In 2022, he attained his current rank of battalion chief. He's been successfully leading shift one since. His work overseeing the department's fire education program has been integral in reducing the number of fires in Marquette, and his can-do attitude has left a lasting impression on the department. Brian, thanks for not only 26 years of dedicated service to the Marquette City Fire Department and the city of Marquette, but also for your friendship. Your retirement's well deserved.
Brian, thank you so much for your years of service and wishing you all the best in your retirement. I'm sorry to see you leave the city. We also have, where my certificate of appreciation to hydrology engineer Jim Compton.
I don't have a lot prepared because if I did, I would be up here for 15 minutes talking about Jim. Jim has been an incredible asset to the city of Marquette over his 23 years of service. Jim is one of the, one of the many, many good members of our team, but I also appreciate all that he has done over the years. And Mick could probably give a bigger list than I'm going to give on the nuts and bolts of things. But for those who don't know, Jim was instrumental in our development of our very first stormwater ordinance. I believe that was your first project when he had started with the city of Marquette, which in, because of that stormwater ordinance, we are now able to pay for and treat that as a separate fund to pay for a lot of the infrastructure improvements in the community. But not only that, Jim was also instrumental in a lot of projects that we may take for granted. The, I know of particular importance to him is the daylighting of the Wetstone Brook. And we all consider it as, you know, it was part of Founder's Landing, and it may be landscaping, but it was also extremely beneficial to the environment. And not only does it look good down there, but I can remember when his wife Jill and my wife worked together back at Republic Bank. Whoa, man, I don't, I'm not going to talk about those days because it is a long time ago. But, you know, out in front of that bank used to be a ditch. And now it is a cool water stream with a lot of vegetation. And there's actually trout that you can see in there. And Jim was instrumental in a lot of those environmental projects. He's been our primary bridge inspector. He's been involved with tons of projects. And I cannot thank him enough for his service to the city of Marquette. And I have always, and I said this in our staff meeting when we had our little cake and stuff, but I've always appreciated your integrity for the public process and your integrity for the profession of engineering. So with that, thank you for your years of service, Jim.
Just a couple, couple words. Almost all of the time, an engineer doesn't get noticed unless the project brings some uproar. Contractors are cutting down lots of trees, the road is getting moved, somebody's going to have to drive through a roundabout. But I have learned that when an engineer does get recognized, that it's special. And I'm very grateful. And this is one of those times. So the people I've worked with have been wonderful, the best. And it's been an honor and a privilege to work for the city of Marquette. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Wishing you all the best in your retirement, and I love walking by the Wetstone Creek. Okay, let's move on to our final presentation from the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee by Walker Derby.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me here. My name's Walker Derby. I'm a member of the Marquette Arts and Culture Advisory Committee. I'm a third-generation Marquette resident homeowner, and I work at Northern Michigan University in the career services department. I'm a career advisor there. So thank you all for having me. It's nice to see a few familiar faces here. I'm just going to give a really brief update on what we've been up to in 2024 and where we're headed in the upcoming 2025 year here. But first, I'd like to introduce our group. So there are currently five of us serving on our seven-person board. So we do have two openings, if anyone is interested in contributing. Myself, Matty Gidman and Matty Arquette. Tom Ados and Athena Stanley are two new members, also faculty at NMU. And then Mateo McNeely is our junior member. Thank you for re-upping him tonight, we really appreciate that. He's been great on giving us some youth perspective as to how the younger generation views the work that we're doing and that the city's doing in this area. So he's been really, really valuable to us. So I am not going to go through all of these because the list is extensive. But I want to just touch real briefly on how involved the Arts and Culture Office and the Arts and Culture Committee is, whether it be events and programs, the various initiatives that we've been working on, not just in the last year, but over the many years, the resources that we offer, many of the committees that are associated with that office, and then the administrative side of things. The list goes on and on and on. This one's real big, projects and partnerships. It's huge. So again, not going to touch on it. My point here is that I've been on this committee for about a year, and it's taken me that long to fully wrap my head around everything that this office and this committee does. It's really impressive, and we're really proud of it. In fact, just recently, Tina sat on a panel at the Second Annual Upper Peninsula Arts and Culture Conference, Alliance Conference, excuse me, which her office actually helped found, I believe, two years ago. And her panel topic was helping smaller communities in the UP mirror the partnerships that we have with the city and with the city offices and other organizations as sort of a best practice case for the Upper Peninsula to move forward with other art initiatives in other cities around the place. So really, really cool. And just a shout out to Tina for being able to represent us in such a good light. For more information on any of this stuff, I direct you to marquettecompass.com. The compass is the hub for all of the arts things in Marquette. And we have plans to see that grow and expand as the Arts and Culture Office moves into their new space right over here. All right, 2024 has been a pretty exciting year for laying the groundwork for a lot of art initiatives. Now, I'm sure you're familiar with some of these, so I'm not going to touch on them. But I do just want to give a shout out to where we are in the process here. So the Cultural Trail Phase One, fully funded and finalized. The interpretive signage will be installed in spring of 2025. The trail runs from the Carp River up to Presque Isle, encompassing the entire lake shore. And it's designed to be sort of a place-making opportunity and a way-finding opportunity for not only citizens, but our visitors. We're looking forward to connecting the rest of downtown with these initiatives in the future. I think that there's a lot of opportunity here to really tell a story about the city and the people that live here. The Cultural Trailhead Building is almost finalized on the design process. We've got a lot of feedback from various constituents that utilize the space already. We've been working very, very hard to make sure that everyone is happy with the direction that that space is going. The area has long been a place of civic engagement. We're looking forward to activating that space to allow more community events and education to take place there, as well as a place for people to come and relax. So hopefully, by the time this is up and running, it's going to look very, very beautiful. And then finally, the Peg Hirven and Ban Shell. This is the ban shell that's going to replace the existing ban shell on Presque Isle to begin construction in summer of 2025. So we're very excited to have updated infrastructure there for a variety of events, concerts, plays, you name it. So pretty, pretty cool stuff. In 2024, the Arts and Culture Office has been able to secure just shy of 1.2 million in grant funding. And they assisted in securing about $1 million in grant requests for the ban shell we just talked about. So pretty exciting stuff. Going forward, we're already working on some 2025 grants. You can see some of these outlined here. But this is just really indicative to me that the Arts and Culture Office is really not only catching their stride, but that the creative sector is a powerful force for securing grants. There's a lot of money that's been put on the table for us, but these didn't happen in a vacuum. They happened because of a lot of those strong partnerships that I referenced earlier on that overwhelmingly large list. And so if there's a public or art or cultural component to a grant that your organization, your commission, your committee is working on, we'd love to hear about it, and we'd love to be able to weigh in on how we might be able to incorporate a cultural aspect to that. It will just make the ask a lot stronger, and we think that there's a lot of benefit to that for the city overall. So we'd love to partner with any of you to strengthen any of those future grant proposals in your respective areas. So please use our resources. Okay. Looking forward, 10 years ago, we had a master plan that transitioned us from programming, classes, youth theater, things like that, to a true city office and a resource hub with a greater focus on economic and community development, as well as a lot of the resources that we now have available for folks in our community. We've been integrating arts and culture into capital improvement projects, which we talked about a few of those earlier. So it's very exciting. Now, moving forward, in 2025, we're working on developing a new 10-year master plan. That should be wrapped up hopefully by the end of next year. And it's going to help to identify cultural and creative assets and how to leverage them, continue to leverage them, into community revitalization and change. We're excited that this plan is going to allow us to uphold and support the city master plan. I've read it a few times, and I got reacquainted with it right outside the doors here. So we're excited to support the initiatives being done there and play a vital role in Marquette's future through the lens of arts and culture. So more news to come on that, it's going to be pretty exciting. So some of the opportunities that I'd like to reach out to you with. You don't need to be an artist to incorporate the Arts and Culture Office or our committee in what you're up to. So let us help with your initiatives. Did you see an organization on that list that kind of spoke to you or one that you might already be on? If so, that's great. Talk to us about how we can continue to partner with you or what some of the ideas might be that you have going forward. If you didn't, let's talk about that. What sort of opportunities do you see us being involved in where we could add a little bit of expertise or a resource to help assist and really drive the culture and arts conversation in any of your areas? So in short, we want to be a part of your planning. We don't want to add any work to anyone's plate. We want to support what you're already doing. And we're really hoping that you're able to come in and help us work on our master plan to make sure that we're incorporating the work that you're doing for the next 10 years of what we're up to as well. You're going to be receiving some information from the office about that and how to contribute. And we'd love to have everybody in this room be a part of that conversation. I think it's going to be really important to help us keep the ball rolling and move forward together. Want to close real quick with a few cultural partnership examples. So if you're like me and you kind of like to see how it's worked in the past, I'm a big context person. Again, not going to read these to you, but there are six examples, global examples here from cities big and, well, bigger, I guess, about how arts and culture offices have been able to help bolster up existing community initiatives and really make something special. And so I don't see a reason why continuing the momentum that we've got going and with our new master plan that we're working on and the initiatives that we've got going, that we wouldn't be on this list over the course of the next 10 years as well. And we love for everyone in this room to be a part of that with us. So looking ahead, again, the next 10 years is going to focus on more fully integrating the work of this office into the city's overall master plan. We'll be providing a roadmap into supporting aspects of city culture. And we want to involve all city staff, commissioners, and committees into that master plan to create a unified vision across everyone's area, regardless of what it might be. So thank you all for listening to what I had to say and for getting, hopefully getting as excited as I am about what we've done in the last year and what we're doing in the years to come. If it weren't for the city's investment in our arts and culture, we wouldn't be able to be here, and we wouldn't have the vibrant, expressive, and inviting community that we do have today. So again, thank you all. It's been an exciting year for us, and we're looking forward to an exciting 2025.
Thank you. Stay there for a second.
Yes.
Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments? Commissioner Schlegel.
Thanks. Walker, that was great, thank you. Appreciate the information. When we were given the presentation to review, I got really excited about the cultural partnerships. And I'm glad that you kind of leaned on that a little bit here. When I looked at the examples, I saw a lot of city culture, city relationship. And I was wondering, maybe I just didn't see it, but does that extend into small organizations within the city other than, you know, you're not just looking at the city of Marquette as a relationship? You're looking at other entities within the city that you could possibly help? Is that, am I reading that correctly?
Absolutely, absolutely. So the examples that I used, I pulled from two articles that have been written in the last year or so. And I liked them because they were pretty high-level and illustrated, you know, globally how this has affected, frankly, larger communities than us, you know, pretty positively. But absolutely, I guess the driving message, I think you hit the nail on the head, is that it doesn't matter what your affiliation is, we have resources, and we have the willingness to partner and strengthen whatever initiatives you're already working on.
Great. That's, that really excites me because I know that there are a lot of very passionate people out there, myself included, that are, that have much larger brains than I, that will be able to tap into those resources and approach you on it. So thanks for that information.
Sure, thank you, Paul.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Walker. Great presentation. I appreciate the high-level overview. You are doing such a great job in advising our wonderful arts and cultural department, which is kudos to Tina and her team. Every time I turn around, there are new amazing events and initiatives and grants to make our city shine even brighter. So thanks for all you do. I'm amazed at kind of the momentum and the velocity of some of the things. And just let us know how we can help and collaborate for the future because I think things are going really well, and it really makes us stand out in the UP and in the region. Thank you.
Thanks, Jenna.
Commissioner Schlegel, did you have something you want to say?
I was a little bit bummed that the presentation down at the Seven Grandfathers that's happening right now as we speak has been lined up in conjunction with our meeting tonight. I was really hoping to get down to that. My wife's down there, but I did want to bring up, you know, there's another example of the great things that have come through the arts and culture as of late. But I just wanted to make mention of it, so.
Absolutely. Well, I'm sorry you can't be there. I'm sure your wife will take great pictures.
Commissioner Otte.
Yeah, Walker, thank you so much for this. It's always great to see your guys' presentation, especially. One of the things I just wanted to make mention of was your mention of the grant funding you guys received. So many people ask us, how do we have funds to do this? How do we have funds to do that? This is a perfect example of government and action. And really, a lot of the things that are being done by Arts and Culture do not cost the city a dime. They're being done by people that are part of a board or people that are specially trained and hired and writing amazing grants and getting those funds. So if you're interested in those things and you have, you know, the ability and capability to help, please get with these people and get on their board because there are two vacancies. So, but thank you guys so much for what you do. It's amazing, and it's amazing to tell people I live in a city with this type of art and culture. It's fabulous.
Thank you, thanks, Jeremy, that means a lot.
Thank you.
Any other Commissioners, comments? Okay. Walker, thank you so much. I really appreciate your work and the committee's work and under the leadership of Tina Moran. This, you know, the arts and cultures are just phenomenal. And, you know, like Commissioner Otte, I'm so appreciative of all the grant funding that comes in to make so much of what you do so vibrant. And the other thing that I'm always impressed with Arts and Culture is that you work so hard to actively engage every community member, whether they are appreciative of the arts or not. They just don't know that they're appreciative of the arts. But the engagement of the public is something that I always appreciate. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
You are, excuse, I think? Okay, moving along to the consent agenda, Commissioners. Commissioner Schlegel?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
And the second, Commissioner, was that you, Commissioner Larson?
I'll second that.
Okay, comments?
None. Well, other than there's a lot going on here. So if you get a chance and you want to go through and review some of these things, there's a lot of good things going on, but it's just not something that we need to necessarily drag through the field tonight. So, but there's a lot going on.
Okay, other comments? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. So let's move on to new business. And again, we have a lot of new business going on here. Our first is something that we do every year, the budget adjustment for fiscal year end 2024. City Clerk, may I have some background?
Thank you, Mayor. In order to stay in compliance with state and local laws and regulations, the city should complete each fiscal year with a budget in which actual expenditure amounts do not exceed budgeted amounts. The attached schedule illustrates funds with projected fiscal year-end activities that exceed current budgeted amounts. Fiscal effect, approval of the adjustments will help ensure the city stays in compliance with budgetary rules and regulations. Recommendation, approve the budget adjustments for fiscal year 2024 and authorize the chief financial officer to make the necessary adjustments to balance the budgets. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, may I have a motion? Commissioner Smith?
I move that we approve the budget adjustments for fiscal year 2024 and authorize the chief financial officer to make the necessary adjustments to balance the budgets.
And the second? Commissioner Otte.
Second.
Commissioner Smith, any comments?
No.
No, this is just a clerical move that we have every single year. More expenses, more revenue. Nothing from a financial standpoint has actually changed. So it's important to point that out. So yeah, pretty simple.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. New business number eight is a resolution accepting LWCF Tourist Park day use road grant agreement. And this will be a roll call vote. City Clerk, may I have the background, please?
Thank you, Mayor. At the March 28th, 2022 regular meeting, the city commission approved the submission of Michigan Land and Water Conservation Fund LWCF grant application for the construction of parking and an entrance road from County Road 550 into the day use side of tourist park. That application was successful, and the Michigan Department of Natural Resources has issued the city a grant agreement. The agreement outlines the timetable for completion of August 29th, 2024 through March 30th of 2027. It also outlines scope of the project and the procedures and process the city staff follow through the completion of the project. The city engineering department will be designing and overseeing the construction of the project. The Parks and Recreation Master Plan outlines this project as a priority for the park. Fiscal effect, the city will realize $250,000 in revenue toward the project expenses reimbursable after project completion. The grant requires a 50% match. Expenses of $500,000 are included in the current budget. Recommendation, approve the resolution of acceptance for the Michigan Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant Agreement, LW26-01888. Authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the resolution and authorize the city manager or her designee to sign the grant agreement. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, may I have a motion? Commissioner Larson?
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the resolution of acceptance for the Michigan Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant Agreement, LW26-01888. Authorize mayor and clerk to sign the. Authorize mayor and clerk to sign the resolution and authorize the city manager or her designee to sign the grant agreement.
And a second? Commissioner Otteway?
Second.
Any comments?
Only that I look forward to, you know, seeing this project move forward and the impact that it's going to have for residents and visitors alike.
Okay.
Nothing further.
Comments? Okay. Roll call vote. City Clerk, would you conduct the roll call vote?
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Otteway?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
And Mayor Davis?
Yes. Motion passes five to zero. And we will move on to the city attorney evaluation. So, City Clerk, background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The city charter requires an annual performance evaluation of the city attorney. In January, the city commission authorized the mayor to appoint a subcommittee to perform this evaluation and make recommendations for changes to the contract. The mayor subsequently appointed Commissioners Smith, Mayor Protem Hanley, and Mayor Davis to the evaluation subcommittee for calendar year 2024. The subcommittee met earlier this month and the overall evaluation was very positive. The city attorney has successfully met all city charter requirements for her position and has met with a representative of the subcommittee to discuss feedback on the review. Following the review, the subcommittee has recommended extending the terms of the contract by one year to September 30th, 2027, and increasing the salary 3%. Fiscal effect, the city attorney's salary will be increased by 3%. Recommendation, approve the city attorney's annual performance evaluation and amend the contract to reflect a 3% salary increase and term extension to September 30th, 2027. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, may I have a motion? Commissioner Otteway?
I move to approve the city attorney's annual performance evaluation and amend the contract to reflect a 3% salary increase and term extension for September 30th, 2027.
Thank you. And Commissioner Schlegel?
I second the motion.
Comment?
Suzanne, thank you for all the work you do. A lot of the things that the city attorney does really does go unnoticed by the public. Frankly, it goes unnoticed by the commission. She keeps things really flowing beautifully and it's really nice to have such professional people running our city. As a commissioner, it makes me feel like there's very little we need to do except to let you steer the ship and it's very good to be in this position, so thank you for all the work you've done. Thank you.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yeah, I just, kudos, Suzanne. You've done a fabulous job and I just, every month we get a monthly report. It's very detailed and bullet, bullet, bullet of everything that gets run across her desk and it, I don't know how you have enough time in the day, but I want to thank you for all of that hard work and everything else that you bring to the table, not only for the commission, but for the city and as a friend. So, thank you.
Other commissioners? All right, I will call the vote. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. And we'll, oh, there was one thing I did want to say about the city attorney. Along with all of the really important big things that she does, she does little things like reminds the mayor to approve the agenda. And that's also appreciated. Okay. City Clerk, may I have some background on the city manager evaluation?
Thank you, Mayor. The city charter requires an annual performance evaluation of the city manager. In January, the city commission authorized the mayor to appoint a subcommittee to perform this evaluation and make recommendations for changes to the contract. The mayor subsequently appointed Commissioner Smith, Mayor Protem Hanley, and Mayor Davis to the evaluation subcommittee for calendar year 2024. The subcommittee met earlier this month and the overall evaluation was very positive. The manager has successfully met all the city charter requirements for her position and the majority of city commissioners awarded her the highest rating in all other performance categories. The manager has met with a representative of the subcommittee to discuss feedback on the review. The subcommittee has recommended extending the terms of the contract by one year to September 30th, 2027, and increasing the salary 3%. Additionally, the subcommittee has recommended the inclusion of a tuition reimbursement clause to allow the city manager to pursue continuing education through a credentialed program. Fiscal effect, the city manager's salary will be increased by 3% and will be eligible for tuition reimbursement moving forward. Recommendation, approve the city manager's annual performance evaluation and amend the contract to reflect a 3% salary increase, term extension to September 30th, 2027, and a tuition reimbursement clause. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Mayor, or Commissioner Smith? I'm still thinking of you as mayor. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Your Honor. I recommend that we approve the city manager's annual performance evaluation and amend the contract to reflect a 3% salary increase, term extension to September 30th, 2027, and a tuition reimbursement clause.
Second? Commissioner Otteway?
Second.
Commissioner Smith, do you care to comment?
I do. Thank you to Karen Kovacs, our wonderful city manager, for all that she does. I think I had put in the eval that she is a city manager that we didn't know we needed at the time because when she came on board, we had some financial things that we had to untangle and she is the perfect person with her background and she was able to do that with fidelity and also, you know, building rapport with both city staff and the commission and the community at the same time and continues it year over year. And I think it's a testament to the work she does that she's asking for tuition reimbursement because she wants to continue to learn and grow, which is, you know, an honor for a city to have someone that's doing that. I know it's not the time to also talk about the city attorney, but I was just trying to save a little time. Suzanne, you also bring so much to the table and I really appreciate the way that you are able to keep us informed and keep us in check, which is not an easy job and with a high degree of fidelity and we have the utmost confidence that you're leading us the right way. So, between the two of you, our city is in great hands, which is a great place for me to leave when I'll be out of here in a few meetings. So, thank you both.
Comments?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's hard to follow Commissioner Smith. Has to wait with words, but I will say, Karen Kovacs, you are the epitome of a fabulous city manager. I will just tell a quick story. We were at the MML conference recently, getting some really continuing ed for all of the commission and city staff that was there. And to see how Karen can command a room and be with her peers that run other municipalities across the state and just see the influence that she has in that room and how people, you know, come up to you and say, you guys are really lucky to have Karen. She's amazing. It makes me feel so, so, so thankful to have you as a city manager. And I joke with Karen all the time that the city of Marquette has had a problem for a long time not having consistency at the city manager level. And if you, if you take a look at our history of city managers, most of them are very short-term, two to five years. And I said, gosh darn it, Karen, we're going to get you there longer than that. We're going to keep you in that spot because with her success is our success. And as far as I'm concerned, the best thing the city commission can do is support its employees, which we have two of them and they're sitting right there, so as long as I'm here, I'm going to continue to do that. So, thank you.
Other commissioners, do you care to follow either of those?
No, thanks, but I agree.
Karen Kovacs, you have done so much in the three years that you've been here. What? Yes, you have. You've accomplished a lot and I believe Commissioner Smith was right. I believe your real words were in that evaluation was she was the solution to a problem we didn't know we had. And I really appreciate how much we've, how far we've come in that and I really look forward to the years that you will remain here. And I'm very happy that we can give you tuition reimbursement so that you can continue your expertise. So, with that, I am going to ask for a vote. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. So, next we have, speaking of, Commissioner Otteway mentioned some education that we've gone through and we've got a series of reimbursements. So, the first one is Mayor Davis and Mayor Protem Hanley travel reimbursement. So, City Clerk, some background?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Davis and Mayor Protem Hanley attended the annual Michigan Municipal League Convention held on Mackinac Island, September 11th through the 13th, 2024. The following checks will be issued for travel expenses incurred. Mayor Sally Davis, check number 6801, in the amount of $14.10. Mayor Protem Jessica Hanley, check number 1010728, in the amount of $26. Fiscal effect, total travel costs are $40.10. Adequate funds are available within the fiscal year 2024 city commission travel budget. Recommendation, approve travel reimbursement for Mayor Davis in the amount of $14.10 and Mayor Protem Hanley in the amount of $26 for the Michigan Municipal League Convention. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, may I have a motion? Commissioner Schlegel?
I'll make the motion to approve travel reimbursement for Mayor Davis in the amount of $14.10 and Mayor Protem Hanley in the amount of $26 for the Michigan Municipal League Convention.
And a second? Commissioner Otteway?
Second.
Any comments? Oh, Commissioner Smith?
I just wanted to say-
Take the motion, go first.
I know. You didn't have your hand up.
I shouldn't have to, actually.
Okay. You can go next.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Commissioner. I was just going to say I'm appreciative that we had so many of our staff and our commission take the opportunity to go to this conference while it was in, it was on Mackinac Island, which is in the UP, which is, usually we have to travel much farther. And just so the public is aware, we had to break this up in several motions, so it's kind of administratively a challenge, but so that people can recuse themselves from the vote. So, you're going to hear the same thing over and over again. It's not normally like this, but we just have to get through it. Thanks for being patient.
My apologies. Commissioner Schlegel?
That's okay. Nobody's perfect, right? I would just like to point out that when you see these in the future, that you'll see a varying number. This was a great MML. I mean, it was really well put on and I really enjoyed all the topics we were able to cover. A lot of the extras were included in the initial package when we went, so that's why you're seeing so small numbers. And next time, if we have to go down to Grand Rapids or somewhere else, that we're lucky enough to go for the MML, you'll see different numbers. So, if you happen to be part of those discussions, you'll say, well, why was it this and why was it that, you know, versus the last one? It just has a lot to do with the different packages that they offer when we go. So, I just thought I'd make that known for public knowledge.
Okay. Commissioner Otteway?
I was going to save all of my comments on MML until the end, but I'll get rid of them now. So, Commissioner Schlegel pointed out the difference in costs. If you look through these budget numbers, mine's a little bit higher and so is Commissioner Larson's, I believe, for various reasons, but we, for the most part, ride together to these conferences, so we save the money when it comes to the ferry ride, things like that. So, that's why you'll see different costs come out of mine versus Commissioner Schlegel's, kind of like he said. So, I wanted to just talk about a couple of the things that I learned during this conference. And I will say that whether I get elected or not again or continue to serve as a commissioner, I urge every single commissioner to attend MML. I really believe it is a key learning component of a commissioner and of a leader at the municipal level. Ultimately, we had the opportunity to kind of pick and choose what classes we wanted to take. There were general things, you know, you could, we all had to kind of sit through, but I took a course that was very valuable on city commission, city manager relations. Just gave great examples of, well, from other municipalities across the state and what they're doing to make their relationships even stronger because, once again, if our relationship with our city manager is extremely strong, it's going to make our government function much better. I also took a course, which was a lot more deep and dark, but super duper important, in responding to mass shootings. And it was, it was eye-opening. It was led by an instructor that was a member of the Michigan State Police that actually responded to the mass shooting event at Michigan State University. So, very, very, very rewarding, very amazing things to learn and just things that I hope we can pass on from a commission standpoint and have other conversations with the leadership that runs the city. So, thank you.
Okay. So, I will call the vote and I will be recusing myself since this motion involves myself. So, all those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. So, now we have the Commissioner Larson travel expense. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Larson attended the annual Michigan Municipal League Convention held on Mackinac Island, September 11th through the 13th, 2024. The following check will be issued for travel expenses incurred. Commissioner Michael Larson, check number 1010741, in the amount of $229.44. Fiscal effect, total travel cost is $229.44. Adequate funds are available within the fiscal year 2024 city commission travel budget. Recommendation, approve travel reimbursement for Commissioner Larson in the amount of $229.44 for the Michigan Municipal League Convention. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, may I have a motion? Commissioner Otteway?
Move to approve travel reimbursement for Commissioner Larson in the amount of $229.44 for the Michigan Municipal League Convention.
And a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
I second the motion.
No comment. I said enough.
Okay. And again, Commissioner Larson, you'll be recused from this vote. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. And now we're moving on to Commissioner Otteway's travel reimbursement. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Otteway attended the annual Michigan Municipal League Convention held on Mackinac Island, September 11th through 13th, 2024. The following check will be issued for travel expenses incurred. Commissioner Jeremy Otteway, check number 1010727, $328.10. Fiscal effect, total travel cost is $328.10. Adequate funds are available within the fiscal year 2024 city commission travel budget. Recommendation, approve travel reimbursement for Commissioner Otteway in the amount of $328.10 for the Michigan Municipal League Convention. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, may I have a motion? Commissioner Smith?
I have a clarifying question.
Okay.
My agenda packet shows a different amount than was just read by the city clerk. Just want to make sure it's the right amount.
$328.10?
I saw $327.10.
$328.10.
How?
I think Commissioner Schlegel's is $327.10 coming up.
Whose are we on? Otteway?
Yeah.
Oh, I can do that one. I'm sorry. Oh, we're off by $1. Okay. It was one page ahead. I'm so sorry.
Did you want to make that motion?
I can still make the motion. Yes. I move that we approve the travel reimbursement for Commissioner Otteway in the amount of $328.10 for the Michigan Municipal League Convention.
And a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
I will second that motion.
Okay. Comments? Okay. And Commissioner Otteway, you will be recused from this motion or this vote, so all those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. And now we will move on to Commissioner Schlegel's travel reimbursement. City Clerk?
You guys already know the amount. I could do this one with my eyes closed. Commissioner Schlegel attended the annual Michigan Municipal League Convention held on Mackinac Island, September 11th through the 13th, 2024. The following check will be issued for travel expenses incurred. Commissioner Paul Schlegel, check number 1010750, in the amount of $327.10. Fiscal effect, total travel cost is $327.10. Adequate funds are available within the fiscal year 2024 city commission travel budget. Recommendation, approve travel reimbursement for Commissioner Schlegel in the amount of[1663.23] three-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars and ten cents for the Michigan Municipal League Convention. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, may I have a motion? Commissioner Larson?
I'd like to make the motion that we approve travel reimbursement for Commissioner Schlegel in the amount of three-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars and ten cents for the Michigan Municipal League Convention.
And a second, Commissioner Ottoe?
Second.
Would you care to comment?
No.
No.
Okay. Again, Commissioner Schlegel, you will be recused from this vote, so all those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Okay. We're gonna move on to something a lot more fun. That is a naming the Kids Cove Two: A Playground For All. City Clerk may have some background.
Thank you, Mayor. The Marquette Playgrounds For All Committee has spearheaded the incredible fundraising effort to fund the new Kids Cove Playground at Matson Park, raising over one million four-hundred thousand dollars toward the project. The MPFA has nominated the name of the new playground at Matson Park to be Kids Cove Two: A Playground For All. This naming was proposed by Barb Coleman. Barb and her late husband, Bob Chapman, were the largest donors to the facility other than the Michigan DNR Trust Fund grant. Barb and Bob also volunteered for years to make this facility a reality. The name pays homage to the previous playground and defines the inclusive nature of the design with a playground for all. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board voted unanimously to support this naming effort at the September 16th, 2024 meeting. This, along with the attached letters of support, fulfill the requirements of Commission Policy 2005-01: Naming Parks and Recreation Facilities. Fiscal effect: none with this action. Recommendation: approve the request from the Marquette Playgrounds For All to name the new playground at Matson Park, Kids Cove Two: A Playground For All, in accordance with Commission Policy 2005-01: Naming Parks and Recreation Facilities. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, may I have a motion? Commissioner Larson?
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the request for the Marquette Playgrounds For All to name the new play ground at Matson Park, Kids Cove Two: A Playground For All, in accordance with the Commission Policy 2005-01: Naming Parks and Recreation Facilities.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Ottoe, second, so would you care to comment?
I would just like to say that, you know, the name certainly captures the spirit of inclusivity for the new playground, and certainly is a fitting tribute to the generosity of Barb Coleman and her late husband, Bob. So, who, they've been tremendous supporters of the initiative, and glad it's moving forward. Nothing further.
Comments? Commissioner Smith?
I just wanted to, you know, give a public thank you to the committee, and to the city staff, to the other boards that have been a part of this. It's amazing to see, if you've been down there, there are a lot of kids playing. There was some negative buildup on social media leading up to it, but I think, and I hope, that all of that has gone away now that it's open. I can tell you that my two girls love playing there, and it's a highlight of our community. Thanks.
Commissioner Schlegel, any comments?
You know, I just wanna, I think it's important that we recognize, let me just one second here, that the people that put all the hard work into getting this thing going, the crowdfunding and everything, was, it was just so impressive to see how that was done. And it came on the, on the coattails of us naming the skate park, and, you know, recognizing how generous the community is. And I just, I can't say enough, as I travel throughout the state of Michigan, and when I say that, you know, where I live is in Marquette, and everybody talks about everything that is so great about Marquette. This is just one more feather in our cap. And it just makes me so proud to be a resident, to be a commissioner. My kids played on the old version of this, and I get it. Some people want to see us with the old, you know, more, playing with jarts and things like that, but times change. And I think that this all-inclusive component is really just a compliment to the vision that the people had when they decided that it was time to redo the park. And I just wanna thank everybody that had a piece, had a hand in that. So, thank you.
Any other comments? I brought my grandchildren there last week, and I tried to count how many people were there. And I kept losing track because they kept moving around, but it was somewhere between eighty-five and a hundred, all playing on the playground at the same time, and there was room for everyone. And everyone had something to do, from the baby that was crawling to the teenager. So it's really nice to see this park and come to fruition. Barb and, Barb Coleman and Bob Chapman had, were very passionate about this park, and it saddens me to see that Bob did not get a chance to see the park in its final format, but I know that he's watching us. And this is what I love about Marquette. This was an almost two-million-dollar project, and we did get three-hundred thousand from the DNR Trust Fund grant, but we were able to raise all of that money in our community with this very philanthropic community that we have. And so I'm very grateful to not only the committee, the Chapman-Coleman team, the community, the committee that put this together, and all of Parks and Rec, and everybody that had a part in developing this playground. I think we're gonna have a lot of visitors from around the area visiting just because of this park. So, thank you. I believe we have a vote to take, and so all of those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Which brings us to our second public comments section. So comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making public comments. If you would like to comment, please step up to the podium.
Kind of chickened out earlier, there were so many people in this room. My name's Lucas Thays, I live at 425 Spruce Street. I just wanted to talk about the, it's kind of an odd subject, the garbage and recycling collection times. I wanted to say that my wife and I have lived in Marquette from 2008 to 2011 while she was at Northern Michigan getting her master's degree. We fell in love with the area, and after having two children, moved back to the area in 2018 to raise our family here. We love living here, but are concerned about the time at night the garbage and recycling trucks come by. At our house, they come between 1:30 and 2:30 in the morning on Wednesday, and they basically cause us and our children to wake up. Our children are eight and 10, and they're in public school here. I'm a healthcare provider in the area, and I work with hundreds of patients throughout the, in the city. And I learn from my, talking with people about my dislike for how early the garbage trucks come, but this affects, like, a lot of people in our city. One family I met, their daughter actually sleeps in the laundry room every night, or every garbage night, because she's woken up multiple times. We've lived in many towns throughout our travels, Pittsburgh, Columbus, some other small towns throughout the country, and Marquette's the only town that I've lived in where they come steal my garbage at 1:30 in the morning. I understand why the plow has to come by in the middle of the night with the parking van and stuff, that makes total sense to me. But as far as the garbage and recycling trucks, it seems like it's maybe a little overkill. At 7:00 a.m., they're still on Spruce Street cleaning up the run, and so it's like, I know that they can work at different hours and times when the winter parking van is not in effect. Looking into research on the subject, there are adverse short and long-term health consequences to multiple times of waking up every, throughout the night. And otherwise healthy adults, short-term consequences of sleep disruption include increased stress, pain, reduced quality of life, emotional distress, mood disorders, cognitive memory and performance deficits. For adolescents, there are psychosocial health issues, school performance issues, and risk-taking behavior impacts. Behavioral problems and cognitive functioning are associated with sleep disruption in children. Long-term consequences of sleep disruption in otherwise healthy individuals include high blood pressure, cholesterol changes, heart disease, weight-related issues, type 2 diabetes, and even an increase in colorectal cancer. All-cause mortality is also increased in men with sleep disturbances. For those who have underlying medical conditions, sleep disruption may diminish the health-related quality of life of children and adolescents, and may worsen the severity of common GI disorders. I was told back in 2021 that there was a new garbage agreement coming with the city and local providers, September 2024, but I talked to the Parks Public Works Department, and apparently that's been moved back 180 days. So I'm just here to ask you to please change the time that the collection happens to hours that are not in the middle of the night.
Lucas, I, my apologies, your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, I will close the public comments and move on from comments from the commission. And I'm gonna begin with you, Commissioner Larson.
Just a couple of things, I guess. I know Commissioner Schlegel said earlier that our consent agenda was, you know, relatively packed, so I just wanted to call out one thing, you know, that I'm glad to see those continued partnerships with organizations such as Market Figure Skating, Junior Hockey Corporation, and the Community Rowing Club, and just showing that, you know, how partnerships can really enhance, you know, recreational opportunities for all ages, you know, here in the city. But, you know, calling things along, like that out, along with the new playground, my children, nine and 12, were down there this weekend, and really something for everybody. And it was, it was amazing, really, to see, and really a testament to how great the space is for people of all ages and abilities in our, in our community. So certainly pleased to see that, and I think that's all I've got for today.
Commissioner Ottoe?
Yeah, I'll just make mention, Hurricane Helene obviously has done devastation across the U.S. Seems like a new year, new hurricane. Just, it's happening so often, and it just leads me to really, you know, be thankful that we've gotten our budget in order, and really, you know, it's something we can start to focus on from a infrastructure standpoint, to ensure we are continuously changing out our infrastructure, making sure it's as best as it possibly can be, so when these types of disasters happen, which, you know, if you pay attention to the news, the hurricane obviously hit in the Gulf, and some of the worst disaster in the country is much further north into North Carolina, Tennessee, places like that, due to infrastructure failures. But ultimately, long story short, I am so happy that our budget is where it is currently, so we can get back to really putting money into our infrastructure to keep that stuff in tip-top shape, and ensure that our citizens and our roads are protected.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Thank you, Mayor. The pollen is heavy today, so, excuse me. Unfortunately, I'm gonna be gone this weekend, and I've attended the Fire Prevention Week Static Display and Parade a number of times over the last several years. And it is really great to see all of the, all of the local fire departments come together and showcase what they have, and get the kids up into the trucks, and allow them to be a part of, you know, the magic that is being a fireman, at the same time knowing that they're there for our public health and well-being and safety, and getting to know them. So if you get a chance to spend 15 minutes to a couple hours, go for it. It's a lot of fun. Take a look at it. I'd like to say congratulations to Bedellian Chief Phillips. I didn't really have a relationship with him in his tenure, but I applaud his, his years of service, and I thank him for them. And also with the, congratulations to Hydro Engineer Compton. I worked with him on the Boardwalk project. At the time, I was doing construction for the company that handled that, that piece of, of that revitalization of the old oil fields down there. And I'll tell you, the guy is a high-quality engineer and just an all-around class act, great asset to the city of Marquette. I don't know the engineering term, I think it's a pointer, a stake that they have for elevations. There was a young construction worker at that time that may or may not have removed one of those very important markers, and required him to come back and spend a great amount of time to bring things back into level so that we could continue to do certain improvements down there. But from that, from that young person at the time, I'm sure he apologizes full-heartedly, and I just wanted him to know that. I appreciate all his work for the city. On a very sad note, I just got back yesterday, I was down in Texas, and I had to attend a service for one of my best friend's sons who was killed in a motorcycle accident. And at the age of 22, this kid has put on over 200,000 miles riding bikes, and accidents happen. And the reason I'm bringing this up, not only is because, you know, I want people to be aware of motorcycles, but I want people to be aware of bicycles, and I want people to be aware of e-bikes, and I want parents to be aware that their kids can leave one day and not come back the next. And when they have the access to these e-bikes that go faster than they maybe should be at the, at that age, I want, I want them to have some onus and have that educational sit-down, and importance of, you know, the responsibility that it is to have an e-bike and how it's supposed to be ridden, because we're getting calls and emails on this constantly right now. And I just don't wanna see, I don't wanna see somebody get hurt, whether they're on the bike, or they're coming out of a business, I don't wanna see somebody getting killed so that they have to come home and not, you know, expect that child to walk through the door at 3:30 after school the next day. And it's, it's hard to think that I have to bring it to this kind of a level, to associate it with what I'm, what I'm talking about, but it could happen. And from a slight injury to something more severe. And I just want you, as parents and as citizens, to be aware and to, hopefully, I know that the city is coming up with a plan and that we're working towards it, but until that really comes into fruition, we need to be aware of what's going on. And I'm saying it because we're getting, as commissioners, we're getting so, we're getting so much attention from people in the community that are concerned about this. So, thank you for letting me get in my soapbox in that respect. And when it comes to the Playground For All, I, again, you know, I pretty much said what I wanted to say about that during the, during the vote there, but it is, again, it's one of those things where I was at the MML sitting with another community, and I, and I sat there with them, and I was really impressed, and I sat with them specifically because these guys were movers and shakers downstate. And I said, "What are you guys doing in your community that, that you can, you know, you're excited about, that you can put a, you know, put a new beginning to something that's in your community?" And they said, "An all-inclusive park." And I said, "Ha-ha!" The day that we went down was the day that it opened, here in Marquette. And I said, "We just opened one day. I can't wait to see what's going on with it." And, and so far, you know, unfortunately, I've been away a bit, but I'm looking forward to seeing the kids on that, that playground, instead of watching it be constructed, which I have been doing routinely through its inception. But I think that the, the fact that it's there now, and I think Commissioner Smith said it best, for those people that were keyboard critics on Facebook and the stuff, go down, take a look at it, watch those kids play, and tell me that that's not a great asset to our community. And if you got a problem with that, then you got more problems in, in other areas. So, that's what I've got. Long-winded tonight, again, but it's only because the other two aren't here, and we got some time. Thank you for your time.
Commissioner Smith?
You know, I think everything was pretty well covered. Thank you, Commissioner Schlegel. I did wanna say thank you, Lucas, for your feedback on our waste hauler. I will ask maybe our city manager to weigh in on that. I know the conversations are ongoing, and I do think the shift time may be part of the conversation for multiple reasons, not just necessarily the reason you brought up, which is something to think about. Can't make any promises, but certainly, I know we look at all aspects of these contracts when we look at them, you know, length, costs, bins versus bags, maybe time of day. I know we've got some parking things in the works, too, with our master planning process. I don't think anything has changed in quickly, but I appreciate you coming in, sharing your feedback tonight. Thanks.
Yes, and since you have asked our city manager to address that, I will leave that one alone. And I have just one thing I wanna say, and I wanna give a shout-out to the folks at the Brantley Drop-In Center. They had an open house today to, in recognition of Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month. And the Brantley Drop-In Center is a place to move towards mental health recovery and build healthy, meaningful relationships. It's a, it's a resource in our community that not too many people recognize or know about, but thank you to Linda Reinhardt and her staff, and all of the people that are involved in the Brantley Center for welcoming me to their open house and celebrating the fact that we need more awareness for suicide awareness and prevention. And with that, I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Certainly. Thank you. And thank you for the positive and very productive evaluation and goal-setting process this year. A lot of those things that we talked about that were accomplished, and the things we're looking forward to in the future, especially with the community master plan and strategic plan coming up, are all really due to a well-working and very, very efficient but brilliant team that I work with, and that includes the commission as well. So, it's been a great honor to work with this commission that we have here, but then also to really serve our wonderful residents, who really have some of the best ideas that I've seen. But speaking of idea, really, talking about the collection times for rubbish or collection time, that is something we are discussing right now. The contract has been administratively extended for various reasons, but looking at some of those things that we hear from those residents, this has been a topic recently amongst many neighbors in just the past month or two. So, it's something we are looking at. There will be more conversations with the commission in the very, very near future. So, I do have an address written down, but maybe, perhaps I can grab a contact information in case you don't see the, the agenda go out, we can make sure that everybody's aware of what's going on. So, I know that's not necessarily the answer you're looking for, for sure, yes, but it's certainly something we hear. So, thank you. And then a reminder, as I mentioned with the community master plan, the public hearing for that is tomorrow at 6:00 p.m. at the Planning Commission meeting, and it will be, I believe, here in commission chambers. The next step, if that were to go through and be approved, is to be presented to the city commission for consideration at the end of October. So, please, go ahead and take a look at that draft document that is out there, and if you have something to share, please make sure you're coming to the public hearing tomorrow. And then I just wanted to touch real quick on MML, as that is a real passion of mine, and I'm incredibly proud that I had a lot of representation from Marquette and shared it with my commissioners that were there. I have several colleagues that are very jealous that some of their elected officials don't make it a point to come or can't come, and miss out on some of these really important things. So, throughout the week, from the convention, really, the concept of thriving communities was introduced, and really came out as the emerging theme for the next year, and general sessions really covered what that means for some of these communities, but then also nationally, or from a national perspective, what our job as a Michigan city can be, and is a placemaking leader, as we already are, and then pushing that out for other things, can be as a placemaking leader, as we already are, and then pushing that out for other things and how we can take advantage of that through some other emerging trends like AI in local government. So, those breakout sessions that some of the commissioners had mentioned too, they spanned a number of different topics, including housing, AI, reducing or eliminating greenhouse gas emissions, council manager relationships, employee health insurance, neighborhood connections, well-being in public service, preparing for emergency response, food waste, and more. So, a lot of things that were covered, we kind of conquered, spread out and conquered and kind of took advantage of all of the opportunities here, but it was something that is incredibly beneficial and I'm really proud that our elected officials found the importance of that and were there to learn and network as well. We met a lot of great other communities with some really cool ideas too. So, that is all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, the meeting is concluded at 7:11 PM.